You know, I hope you didn't, we didn't create the impression that we're just scrolling on in here, you know. A lot of times with school boards, we meet about an hour, hour and a half sometimes before we do our public meeting. And have some matters that we have to do in what's called closed session. So the board was just working on that and getting that hard work done. So in some ways, the board meeting started almost an hour ago. My name is Bob McBride. I am very proud to be the superintendent of Lockport Township High School District 205. And even more enthusiastic than you are here, which is amazing. And really, my job in a moment is to introduce our board president because we actually have to open this meeting. In case you are wondering, the American flag will be up in the corner right there. I try to demystify that because when we stand and do the pledge, sometimes it gets confusing. And I just want to thank you so much for being here. Because sometimes what happens is when our youth achieve amazing things, we sometimes just keep on going on our merry way. And Dr. Jacqueline Johnson, our principal at East Campus, she'll have a moment to share why we are here. We also have an acknowledgement this evening of Lockport Township for doing a great thing. We're going to acknowledge them first for just doing a great thing for our district in a moment of need. But it is so important, you might feel, wow, you rearranged your schedules and your family's schedule and you came on out tonight. Just to sit for a moment and acknowledge people who have done great things. But I just feel as a human being, as a superintendent, as an educator, when we see good things done, we have to shine the light on those good things. And especially when it comes to our young people. Lord knows as a parent, Lord knows as an educator, we sometimes tell young people, that wasn't a good thing. But we should overdo it when they do the kind of things that make us so proud of them and make us just so hopeful for our future. That's one of these moments, really, it is one of these moments. So without further ado, would you please give a big round of applause for our school board president? She is going to open this regular session up and acknowledge the township and our students.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. McBride, thank you parents for coming out. Okay, do I have a motion to reconvene the regular meeting? Right, it's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Mr. Travis. Rock call?
Shaw?
Yes.
Teeger?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Okay, the regular session reconvene at 7:07. And if we will stand up for the pledge of allegiance. And Ms. Candace Garrettson, if you would join us, reading the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag of the Constitution, of the Constitution, of our nation, under God, in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will start with our speeches, who will be recognized as Lockport Township government.
Yeah, we can have all our friends from Lockport Township come on down. And they're going to join me right here for their moment in the sun, they're going to hear their names. And some of the members of our special education department. I have a very fancy resolution to read to acknowledge these folks. And we've even seen some old friends, you know, who is outstanding employee. But before I do the very formal resolution that at the end of all of our resolutions, Ms. Lopez Canebo will ask the board to vote on. Just want to tell what these folks did, and really, these folks did too. Many of you know, last year, we were in a moment of distress when we had a ceiling collapse at Central Campus. Central Campus houses two very important programs. The CCC, which is a program for our learners who are 18 to 23 years old. They are learning how to be independent adults, how to work in the world of work. Very important program there. And we had to ask ourselves, where would the CCC go? Because we couldn't take them out of the community like Lincoln Way North. They're part of the community. They're a part of connecting and working and living and being an adult in the community. And we made a lot of, a lot of hate about how kind Lincoln Way District 210 was to us in our moment of need. But I would say, our friends at Lockport Township right down the road on the Pharaoh were equally kind to us, taking our program in, making sure that that program would thrive. Making sure that these outstanding, and I cannot tell you, I get the chills when I talk about these educators that are behind them. The work that they do with our 18 to 23-year-old learners and helping them be ready for that world of independence. That means the world to their parents and to them as well. So we are here to really acknowledge Lockport Township. Want to make sure that if there's anybody here to say something, I don't see all, can I read this resolution? Okay. All right, this is a resolution recognizing Lockport Township government. Alex Amien, Lockport Township Supervisor. Michelle Colacio, Lockport Township Administrator. Dave Geibl, Lockport Township Maintenance Technician, who also was an outstanding employee here at Lockport Township. Whereas with the emergency closure of Lockport Township High School Central Campus on November 1st, 2023, the Career and Community Connection Program needed to relocate during the school closure. And whereas Lockport Township Supervisor Alex Amien immediately offered and provided township office and meeting space and embodied the mission of Lockport Township Government with his commitment to the faithful and impartial service to the people of Lockport Township. And whereas Michelle Colacio, Lockport Township Administrator, assisted teaching staff and students at the CCC to seamlessly transition to the township offices with a warm welcome and supportive assistance. Whereas Dave Geibl, Lockport Township Maintenance Technician, assisted teaching staff and students at the CCC with ongoing setup, ensuring safe and appropriate work environment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that Alex Amien, Michelle Colacio, and Dave Geibl are hereby recognized for their outstanding support and partnership with Lockport Township High School and the Career and Community Connections Program. And this resolution was passed by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205 on this day, the 16th day of September, 2024. Congratulations, thanks so much. And could you also please thank my outstanding colleagues behind me? President Lopez Canebo has a resolution for each of you. So we've got two more things to do. First, as you can see, we have these outstanding human beings. I'm going to turn the mic over to our East Campus Principal, Jacqueline Johnson. She'll tell you what we are doing today. And then, before you leave after we acknowledge these five people, we have our monthly board salutes. So we will pass the mic to our board members. If they see some really good things going on around here, they're going to report it out to you and then we'll head back into the courtroom. Dr. Johnson, can you give a big round of applause for Dr. Jacqueline Johnson?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Dr. Jacqueline Johnson, I'm the new principal here at the East Campus. I'm extremely proud to welcome all of you all to man the space with our students who have done some amazing academic things. Our students have done more than most, I believe. I feel like we have some of the best students around. They truly have done some things with achievement in terms of being recognized for being the top of their group across our nation. We have over 300 students are going to be honored in some way here tonight. We are so very proud. Again, we say congratulations to the parents. We know that this work could not have been done without you and your support with your students. And so now I'm going to read the first resolution for the group. So whereas the following students have excelled on the advanced placement examinations and have received award status as determined by the college board and thereby bring honor and distinction to their families, schools, and communities. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the following students from Lockport Township High School are hereby recognized for receiving the AP Scholar Award for their outstanding academic achievement on the advanced placement exams. This is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. And my first student, Annabella Barrett, congratulations. Emma Bazan, congrats. Luciana Bonjivana, congratulations. Thank you so much. Benjamin Tavet, congratulations. Colton Dunn. Nola Dominic. Anna Egan. Faith Benello. Caroline Felchak. Aiden Garrettson. Ryan Leeson. Aubrey Ronendall. Gabriella Gudzierczuk. Ella Kim. McKenna Klaczko. Cheyenne Simmickwitz. Michael Coling. Natalie Crumden. Haley Kerjack. Angelka Guack. Allison Kawakacy. Mark Lason. Dylan Lesniak. Dominic Longo. Jeff LaPresti. Joseph Luzak. Anthony Markham Heedle. Tara Mustorkas. Malia Moll. Juanita Montoya. Ryan Moran. Janya Nolton. Emily O'Day. Matina Papafatopoulos. Shane Peake. Nora Pelosi. Kylie Pfeifer. Olivia Petrowski. Alexander Ray. Allison Brenahan. Juliana Reyes. Katrina Rengens. Benjamin Sen. Victoria Scarpa. Molly Sechak. Emily Silarje. Lillian Slower. Jessica Smith. Gabrielle Spencer. Joseph Sarzinski. Anthony To. Julia Lauren Urbano. Rowan Wallingburg. Addison Wei. James Waya. Liam Zimmerman. And so that was our first round of AP Scholars. I will now read the next resolution. Whereas the following students have excelled on the advanced placement examinations and have received award status as determined by the College Board and thereby bringing honor and distinction to their families, schools, and communities. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the following students from the Lockport Township High School are hereby recognized for receiving the AP Scholar Award with honor for their outstanding academic achievement on the advanced placement exams, granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point two-five on all AP exams and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. Please step forward. Andrew Bailey. Michael Byers. Julian Keraway. Marcy Currie. Grace DeCheff. Madison Edwards. Lauren Hammer. Hayden Coran. Gianna Camper. Brooke Kent. Owen Kujera. Ellen Lappin. George Mustorkas. Lillian McCarthy. Callie Morgan. Patricia Maroka. Hayden Namanson. James Novak. Lerta Chupaj. Alexander Ben Gurin. All right, we have one more resolution. Whereas the following students have excelled on the advanced placement examinations and have received award status as determined by the College Board and thereby bringing honor and distinction to their families, schools, and communities. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the following students from Lockport Township High School are hereby recognized for receiving the AP Scholar Award with distinction for their outstanding academic achievement on the advanced placement exams, granted to students who receive an average of at least three point five on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. Please step forward. Anthony Bashion. Jane Byers. Madison Siachia. Paul Zamina. Michael Circus. Bryce Flood. Gianna Briere. Abigail Hogan. Joshua Kelly. Helen Coze. David Prizesia. Jackson Maloney. Logan Burtonz. Sydney Larsa. Evelyn Merle. Michael John Oligario. Noah Pujuk. Laura Paulika. Julie Toretta. Wazira Shifoni. Eric Slominskas. Kristen Wessel. All right, we have now just completed all of our acknowledgements of our students. Again, parents, thank you for all of your support and for being a wonderful asset for our kids.
Yeah, and we have board salutes, yeah.
All right, do I have the motion to accept the resolutions as presented?
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Okay, here, Dr. McBride said this is something new that we're doing this year and it's called the board salutes. So I'll start out. First of all, as board salute, I give salutes to all of our AP awards scholars today. I mean, it was phenomenal. I think this is the biggest group we've ever had, you know, this year. And in thanks, also another board salute, thank you to the parents, because I think you guys really had a lot to do with it, not only our staff, but you guys too. So I thank you for this and I know we're proud of them as you are too. All right, I will be passing on the mic down here, so here is Mrs. Elaine Johnson. She'll give another board salute.
I give a board salute also to the students, the parents, and the teachers. Without the teachers, we wouldn't be where we are. Thank you.
Yeah, to kind of echo on the same thing, the parents especially, putting in the hard work in the time with the students and pushing them to get to where they at today. I want to give you a salute.
I want to give a salute to the attitudes of our students. I can see all of you smiling as you get your awards. I can see all of the parents just smiling as you see your kids get your awards. The different, just looking at a crowd and seeing the parents stand up and take photos as their child gets an award, that is an amazing, like, you know, seem to behold just how proud you all are and how happy you all are to be here.
I salute the work that the AP Advocates did this week with Mrs. Featherling as they honored the AP teachers that helped those students get those scores. We printed out banners, they got El Townground gift cards, just a nice thank you note. So they were really honored for the work that they did in getting those students to that place.
I'd like to salute the amount of clubs that everyone is in. Like, we have so many clubs at this school that so many of these advocates are AP advocates and people who just do amazing things. And it's thanks to this board and all these parents for supporting all of their kids to really, truly give them that experience in high school.
So I have a speech prepared, but I left it in the other room, so I apologize for that. I just want to thank Dr. McBride, the administrative team, Dr. Huntington. I was able to come here this week and tour the building with two of my associates over at Sandberg. We were able to see a number of things happening in the building. First off, just the hallways in general, the warm feeling, the kids, just, it was really nice to see. We got to see Period Two, we got to, sorry, that's what we call it, we got to see Compass, which is our version of Period Two over at Sandberg. And then we also got to see the Park Program. We got to see the coffee shop, we got to see the porter store, we got to see all kinds of things that are great, great, wonderful things that are happening here. And we're looking forward to the partnership that we are going to have between Sandberg and here, just communicating and working on things to make life better for students in general in our area. So, thank you again.
I have two tonight. The first one is obviously a salute to all the parents, the students, teachers that have put all these kids in these wonderful positions to be able to succeed as much as they are. It's just phenomenal to see this many students just excelling. I was thinking about the total number of students we have at LTHS, and this is almost ten percent of all of these students that we have. So to have ten percent of our students getting AP recognition at our school is just phenomenal. The second thing I want to salute is our administration, police, parents, students for their work today, given some difficult situations that were occurring last night and this morning. I think everybody just did a phenomenal job of having a normal school day in the face of some concerns and other things that were going on in our world today. So I want to appreciate all of you for all of the work that you did today on that too.
I would just like to echo and salute the administration and staff as well. I was able to tour east during the first few days of coming back to school and I really just had a moment to appreciate just how much caring and dedication our teachers and our staff and our students. I did get to interact with some of the students as we were peeking on their classrooms had for that time and I couldn't be more proud and more pleased with our school district and everything that's going on.
Thank you to my fellow board members. All right, at this time, we're going to take a little five-minute break because I know some parents really want to take pictures of their students right in front of this, right? So we'll give you this opportunity and we'll take a five-minute break from our board room.
Annual budget hearing here for this fiscal year. I want to, first of all, apologize for Avery and Mia not being able to get to their AP. They are also our AP Scholar winners. So we're going to have our principal read out a resolution, just for those, for them two.
Absolutely. I'm going to start. First, Miss Avery. Whereas the following students have excelled on the Advanced Place and Examinations and have received award status as determined by the College Board and thereby bringing honor distinction to their families, schools, and communities. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the following students from Lockport Township High School are hereby recognized for receiving the AP Scholar Award for their outstanding academic achievement on the Advanced Place and Exams granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Avery Colella. Congratulations.
All right. And we have the next resolution. Whereas the following students have excelled on the Advanced Place and Examinations and have received award status as determined by the College Board and thereby bringing honor distinction to their families, schools, and communities. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the following students from Lockport Township High School are hereby recognized for receiving the AP Scholar Award with distinction for their outstanding academic achievement on the Advanced Place and Exams grant to students who receive an average of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. Mia Fontanera. Avery Colella and Mia Fontanera on these AP Scholars. Second, all right, it's been motioned by Mr. Beast and second by Dr. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations to the parents. Okay, all right, moving on. All right, do I have a motion to open the budget hearing for the fiscal year 2024, 2025?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Beast and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Tease?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Yes. All right, it's been opened at 7:46. And we have none. All right. Do I have a motion to close the budget hearing for the fiscal year 2025?
Show them.
Sorry.
It's been motioned by Mr. Beast and second by Mr. Travis. Roll call.
Tease?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes. Hearing closed at 7:47. All right, now we're moving on to our reports, our student board member reports.
And we have two. We've got, they're going to introduce themselves, our new student government reports, and then we'll, if it's okay with you, Ms. Lopez.
Sure.
We'll do our student board member.
Okay.
So why don't you guys come on up, join us, and introduce yourselves.
Hi, my name is Leigh Mucini, I'm a senior.
Hello, my name's Olivia Petrowski, and I'm also a senior.
Uh, hi, I'm Ryan Kane, and I'm a junior.
Uh, my name is Cheyenne Pierre, and I am a junior.
Cheyenne, um, well, actually, Olivia, would you like to start off?
Um, yes, so our theme is Welcome to the Jungle, and on Monday, Student Government will be hosting our, like, decoration for the hallways.
And for our Spirit Week, we chose Adam Sandler Day, USA Day, Animal Prey/Safari Day, and of course, col- um, sorry, Class Color Day, and Porter Pride Day on Friday.
On Tuesday, we are hosting our movie night, and we chose the Jumanji remake.
Okay, um, so I've heard this around from a lot of the students, um, not really complaints, but, you know, just a thing that we can look into. Um, so there's, in the new addition, I know a couple of the board members recently toured the school, um, the new addition right near the kitchen area, um, they have these physics and anatomy classrooms, as well as earth science, that have these bar stools, and a lot of the kids have been saying that, you know, they just have been having the pain sitting there, you know, for around 50 minutes, only you could imagine, you know, sitting in a chair, taking notes, or listening to a lecture. Um, so yeah, that's just been on the radar with most of the students, as well as, you know, um, the panini line in lunchroom play. You've heard that before, yeah. Sorry to bring it up again, but no, um, the students just feel that, um, something needs to be, um, more efficient in the ways to just get the food quicker and more accessible to the students wise. And I think that clears everything up. Um, any questions on behalf of the board, or anything would you guys like us to ask at our meetings wise that we can get like a survey from the students, or anything you guys, you know, that comes to mind?
So, go ahead.
Is the chair issue because they don't have backs, or they're too tall?
Yeah, so, yeah, they're, so they're bar stool chairs, um, and they don't really have the back support that most classrooms do, and just sitting there, I've heard from multiple students, me, one of them, um, being that this is my second year in one of those classrooms, um, just having that issue to where you're like paying attention and having that ache in your back. So maybe something to a solution that we can try and put together for that.
So it's just a lab class?
Yeah, so there's, um, ana- anatomy classes, there's physics classrooms, as well as earth science classrooms there, yes. Um, so they're mainly focused on, I spoke to Dr. McBride prior to this and let him know about this issue, and, um, what they were, when the classrooms were first built, because that's a newer part of the building, um, they were supposed to be, you know, told that they'll be actively, you know, doing labs and, you know, group work, so they won't be sitting down for a majority of the time while they're in the classroom. That's why those chairs were predominantly chosen, um, to be bar stools instead of, you know, regular desks. There's lab tables as well as, you know, group working spaces that you can use. Any other questions?
So is the, are the paninis the most popular menu item for the cafeteria?
I'd say so. I'd, uh, yeah, I'd say so from a survey from the students.
Is that why it's?
Yes. That, I'd say it's commonly, um, a lunch favorite, yeah. Anything else? Anything that you guys would like to, you know, get a survey wise from the students that we can, you know, tell the students at our meetings, any questions or anything?
How are the freshmen?
How are the freshmen? We, so we don't, um, we have some freshmen in our student government meetings. We're trying to amp up our freshman, you know, student government pop, um, but, you know, we're just, we'll, we'll find that out, we will. Yeah, we'll do our best to see how they're doing and the switch from everything, so yeah, we'll figure that out. Anything else? That's it, yeah.
Thank you for bringing those concerns to us.
Yes, anytime. Yes, have a nice night, enjoy.
You too, have a nice night.
And then, Ms. Kishan, we've got, just a little new thing with the student board members. Thanks.
All right. So we just had our student advisory council meeting very recently, it was last Wednesday, and this meeting, you know, was, we were really just kind of discussing the main things we wanted to set our focus on for this year, so these are some of those main topics that we talked about, um, that a lot of, a majority of students, um, kind of voice, so we know it's main things, and that first topic is of the bell schedule.
Yes, so the bell schedule, um, we're getting a new mandate by the state legislature to have two years of world language for each student, um, and this will kind of like destroy, destroy our numbers in like CTE, arts, music classes, uh, if it's not fixed. So we were just, uh, brainstorming some ideas, like eight periods at East, or a zero hour, or certain things we can do to help fix this, uh, but it's just one of our top priorities.
I would say the main thing that we talked about was switching to an eight-period day, which obviously Central Campus already has, so we figured it wouldn't be too hard of a switch since that, um, structure is already present.
Would that be maintaining an eight-period day at Central as well, or adding an extra period there too?
We talked about just maintaining an eight-period, just making the two match with an extra period at East, hopefully alleviating like those requirements, allowing for still electives. And then our stop, our second main topic that we talked about was curriculum.
Um, so curriculum is just basically offering, um, new classes, and it would connect to the bell schedule. If you had more time in your schedule, you would be able to, uh, take on more classes, so more AP. Uh, we had a little bit of, um, comment about ASL III, because we only have two ASLs, so it'd be nice to have like a third one, uh, for kids wanting to.
Which might I add, I do believe most colleges require three years of ASL for any sort of recognition of credit.
What's ASL?
American Sign Language. So, yeah, I think those two things are just very important and tie in together with Lockport's mission to make our kids college and career ready. I think, one, we have to have the schedule and the date to maintain that, to have those classes that can actually do it, and then, two, have a diverse curriculum, or even just looking into, like we said, for American Sign Language, like, are we actually meeting, obviously it's a more niche class, but are we still meeting the college requirements for that class? So the next one will be facilities, yes, which obviously does tie into as well bell schedule, um, because keeping the school open, adding an extra period, you know, that's classrooms, teachers, it affects finances, um, as well. So that was, we mainly just talked about how adding in that extra period, or some sort of change to the schedule would affect, um, facilities. And then Central is also still a main topic, especially in our council, and the next thing that we kind of talked about with continuing that Central Campus journey of improvement is doing more ADA friendliness. Um, obviously, I know the state does not deem like ADA improvements as part of a life bond, so we would, the next steps with that, making the school more ADA friendly, and also just, um, for the kids, I believe right now they're entering through the back entrance, so even just little things like that, like how can we get them to enter through the front entrance, so they feel more like they're a part of every other student, um, entering through.
Um, and I will say, like, I've gotten the experience of pushing a cart around, uh, East here, uh, just for the Chromebooks, um, the tech office, and it, you don't realize how difficult it is to get around the stairs, um, just to go to one side of the building for the elevator, when, like, all the classes are on the other side. So just, not saying we can add another elevator, but, um, doing something that would help improve. Yeah, that's, that was for East, yeah. Because we just have those little steps that like, they get in a little bit of the way.
And then lastly, we also to talk about the science wing seating, which is kind of funny that student government brought it up as well, with those bar stools in the science classrooms. It's, we were kind of talking about how that new wing obviously is beautifully remodeled, um, it's a great space, very flexible, um, for all the classes, and everything seems very intentional, except the seating, which is kind of interesting. So we were just talking about improving the seating if possible. And then the next thing we talked about was the calendar. Yeah, so, sorry. Um, one thing that was mainly brought up was recognizing our Muslim population and possibly working a day off for their Eid holiday.
Is that Greater Eid, right? It's coming up?
I don't know.
Same, same. Oh, I, there's like lesser Eid and there's greater Eid, if I'm not mistaken, and I think greater Eid is coming up, like, soon.
Yes, I believe we did talk more for the bigger Eid holiday, not the small one, um, but that was just a smaller topic in general, talking about the calendar, structuring the school year with, do we start later in the year, like more until later August, um, obviously with the Central Campus remodeling this summer, that was a possibility for our school year, and kind of seeing how do teachers feel about that, how do the students feel about that, or starting earlier and getting out, um, earlier. So that was just something that we kind of surveyed in the council.
Um, a big one we also had was cell phones. Basically, how do we limit them and allow in-person communication, like enhance Basically, how do we limit them and allow in-person communication, like enhance it uh for each student? And just learning how to be respectful to your teachers um while still being able to access your phone. It's kind of become a big problem at um at east. Just people walking in the hallway, always looking down at their phone. It slows, it slows down the traffic and um just, we could do so much more to enhance like our communication as students. If we got off our phones.
It's kind of funny because I don't think you'd expect students to be complaining about being on our phones so much. But we have kind of realized, especially as more teachers have started to instate like the phone jail or like phone homes, whatever you want to call it. Where your phone is put away during class, it does allow for so much more focus, I feel like. An intentional focus, so that's something that we talked about, um just implementing schoolwide or some sort of thing. Because yeah, I think it is starting to inhibit the school day and the learning process.
And so the next one we did was counselors. Obviously, we as, like you guys as a board, um have fixed a lot of this problem by hiring on um more counselors. But we're never done with this journey as we always want to try and connect more and more uh with our students. Last year, I was one of the people who researched um on the counselors. I went in and I talked to, I believe it was Mr. Kelly and Mr. Hammer. And I talked to those two about like how they felt that their load was. And then we were able to get this established um where we were able to hire more, so it was pretty cool.
Which is so amazing, so thank you for that. It was really cool being in the council last year to be able to see that we were making an impact. But it's just continuing that for when we do leave Lockport, all those students in the future. Making sure that they have the guidance counselor and the resources that they need to succeed.
So do the students think it's better, the fact that we have an additional counselor?
Yes, I think so. I feel already, I've seen so much more activity from the guidance counselors with signing up for um compass sessions and. I mean, being a senior, I know college applications is something that they've helped with a lot for sure. But kind of as we were saying, with the amount of students that we have and I think an ever-growing population, it's not done and something to stay proactive about. So just making sure that the, that load on the counselors doesn't get high.
That's possible question for student government. The young man was saying, calling the students to see the impact of us adding additional counseling. Oh, he's here, yeah? Oh, I can't separate it. Okay, that's your survey right there.
See the impact of um the?
Additional counselor.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
Let me ask again, are these bar stools wood?
They are metal, so kind of like, ooh, they're black metal, have like almost like serrated holes like on the flat part of them. And it makes sense why they chose them because the tables are higher, so the bar stool kind of like matches with that height. But I am a student in one of those classes and I am frequently disgusted with my posture. I'll be working hard in my notes and I'm like, my gosh, like I got a stray in my back. But I just know that was something that was talked about a lot in the council, actually, so yeah.
Can we get our welding crew to weld up some backs and put those on?
I don't know the origin story of said bar stools. I've been working so hard on paninis, I can barely. But, but as a back sufferer, I, I, I feel it, I get it, I, you know, I'll have to do a little bit of investigations. This is the first time the students have brought it up, that it's not a comfortable situation, right? But it's one that I can highly empathize with, right? So we'll have to find out.
Is that something that the student government can research on with the?
I think we probably have to research, because the tables are high, so you would have to have a high seat.
Get our Skills USA, one of those teams to.
You could probably also 3D print them, I mean, I don't think it would have to be that big.
Bring this back to our engineering team.
Yes, yes.
Maybe mix, maybe mix the both, have the metal and plastic edition. Or a wood edition.
Yeah, make the students happy with the paninis.
I hear the board's proactive, paninis first, bats second.
Add another machine or whatever they do.
Who's in charge of our paninis?
Hey, we added a whole new serving line, we added a whole new station. You just can't beat those paninis.
No, you can't. You got two witnesses right here.
All right, moving on, IFT report, Ms. Katie Kishline.
Good evening. It's always a great evening when we can start in the cafeteria. Because as I know, I will always say, none of it happens without the great support of our teachers. But it is great to recognize our students. But I actually want to give a shout out to another group um that you don't often see behind the scenes and that's our support staff. Because as those AP exams are happening, within minutes, we have to flip it over to a volleyball game or we have to, you know. Get a sub to cover for the AP coordinators, so if it wasn't for our support staff, none of it happens. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them as well. Last Thursday, we were excited to start another year of our steering committee, so we, again, thank you for continuing to carry that on. And have the open conversations. We're looking forward to also diving into researching the eight period schedule, we're excited about that. Just a few announcements with some of our staff going on. We had a finalist for the science teacher of the year from the Illinois Science Teacher Association, Sarah Steinkie. So I just want to give a shout out for that. We also have one of our own office professionals, Grace Gonzalez, was elected to our local six oh four board. So she is currently a vice president board member now for local six oh four. And then we have, Gail Worsjak is an IFT virtual coach, which is going to work through the Illinois Federation of Teachers. To help first, second and third year teachers within our um council area. So it's kind of virtual support and, you know, just an extra guidance for those. And you can actually have been a longstanding teacher, but maybe be a first year teacher in the district. So just kind of a shout out to, again, our own staff who are going above and beyond outside of the classroom. So just wanted to kind of let you know about that and that's all I have for tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you. IASB report, Ms. Lynn Johnson, nothing?
I don't have anything, so. I keep saying the triple I is coming.
Yes, triple I is coming, yes.
And then I guess, have to have these, we need to look and fill out.
All right, thank you. All right, foundation report.
Good evening. So I'm just gonna try and do a quick, just once over what's already in front of you. Taste of Lockport is this Saturday. We ordered really great weather, so we're very excited that that, that order was taken and came through. Last year, we had about fifteen hundred community members that, that were there. It's a great time to just kind of be in community and support the school. I think it's amazing, so many people have to come together to do a large event like that. And it's really gratifying to be able to work with so many people that want to support our school. So I, you know, shout out to all of those, you know, unsung heroes that are in the backgrounds from the police to the city of Lockport themselves. And, and everyone that comes alongside us, um, we're really happy that we can do it for the third year. We're excited to see what happens and again, I think the good weather is on our side, so it should be, it should be a nice event. Starts at five, um, and then of course, the noise curfew is ten thirty in Lockport. So we will be adhering to that rule and ending properly at ten thirty. And then we are right, just a couple of weeks later, we're excited to be bringing back Young Hearts for Life. I will say that it's probably one of the most gratifying things that, that people, when we ask them to volunteer, they feel really good about that. Everyone's invited to come and volunteer. Last time we did it, we identified ten students and, you know, what's great about it is that we can try and prevent our students from being the ones that you see on television. That have those scary, life-altering moments, just walking down the hallway or at basketball practice. So we're really pleased that we can do that. We've got a couple of sponsors to help us offset the cost, so that, that makes a huge impact, so we're excited about that. And then I don't know what the last one is on that, on that page, but um one more. We, I'm recently talking to someone to add one more scholarship to our twenty twenty-five graduates for this year. A former student, so an alumni would like to do a scholarship for students that are focused in the foods area specifically. Because they noticed that we don't have anything like that. So I'm excited, like, as we work through and, and make more connections, it's fun to offer more opportunities for focused, you know, focused students. That's it for me.
And shout out for the Nutcracker.
Oh my gosh, that's, that was the one thing, yep, you're right, and yeah, the Nutcracker will be coming back. I love that we can use the school in that way, the community can come and see a, a performance. This group invites uh small community members in to do small parts, so they can also be a part of it. I think it's just a really nice, you know, it, when I was growing up, I would go to my local high school to see the Nutcracker, so I love that we can bring that here. And so hopefully, it's a nice tradition that can continue on for, for our community. Thank you. Thank you.
No, thank you. All right, legislative report, there's really not that, no report?
Legislature is, they're all back in their districts and, oh, return for a fall veto session a little later, in October, November.
And public comment follow-up?
We did not per se have anyone in public comment last month, but as the board knows, uh, we're still working with a group of citizens. Who presented on June seventeenth. Eight citizens, eight slide decks, total of eighty-four slides, various different ideas about finances and facilities. We met on September seventh, uh, sat down, worked through some of that material. Still have work to go, um, that, that work is not done. You know, I would probably say, you know, the most important thing about that is following up on public con, uh, comment. And, and literally sitting down, you know, it's a very old-fashioned idea to, to sit down, to roll up your sleeves. I think if anything, our meeting on September seventh represented how layered, complex and challenging. School finance, facility management, taxation, regulation can be, you know, when you're trying to future-ready. Your facilities for the kind of trends and populations of students that, that we're seeing, it's a complex field. If it was easy, you know, we would not need people like Mr. Thompson or the skill level of Mrs. Croix or, or architects or builders. You know, if, if it was easy, so I just appreciated, for me, the gain was sitting in the same room, all of us really working together.
All right, at each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comments section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of policy two colon two three O. And policy eight colon three O available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board, and there are none. Yes, I think Dr. McBride did on public comment follow-up, he did, he just finished up on that, so. And there are none of public comments. All right, and you know there's no communication and there were two freedom of information requests then. Okay, moving on to our approval items, I'm going to combine.
Communications?
No, no, no communication, no. I'm going to combine these two for the April. All right, uh, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the August fourteen, twenty twenty-four special board meeting? Along with the um closed session minutes from the August fourteen, twenty twenty-four special board meeting?
So moved.
Second. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw, are there any questions? Okay, hearing none, roll call. Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Garrettson? Lopez Kaniva? Yes. All right, do I have a approval to approve the special board meeting minutes of August fifteen, twenty twenty-four? Along with the um approval of the special meeting, closed session meeting minutes of August fifteen, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw, are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call. Shaw?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Garrettson? Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Kaniva? Yes, all right, also combined these, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August nineteen, twenty twenty-four? Along with the regular uh meeting, closed session meeting minutes of August nineteen, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
And motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw, any questions? Hearing none, roll call. Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Kaniva? Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the September twenty twenty-four board expenses?
So moved.
Nothing second there, or, all right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Mr. Travis, are there any questions? Right, hearing none, roll call. Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Garrettson? Lopez Kaniva?
Yes.
And then at this time, we're going to have Ms. Stephanie Troy.
And as Stephanie kind of comes up for the treasures report, I want to pass out what we did is, um, you know. If, if the board wants to, I think Stephanie being up here, you know, um, tonight's main event really is the, the budget. So what I'd like to pass around is what we did is, um, Mrs. Croix did a great job with some illustrations of the budget. So it's, it's good to sometimes get those in your actual hands, you know, have those in front of you. That's not the entirety of our treasures report, you've got a lot of other things in their treasures report. But we will uh send these around and, you know, all the way to Ms. Fontanata. Just to make sure that you've got that tactile, you know, it might come up, um, depending on your questions. But I think we'll, you know, kind of do the treasure report while Stephanie's up here. Really get into any questions that you have, you know, further in the agenda. And I can jump to the agenda with the FY twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Which is an approval item later and maybe a discussion item right now. Stephanie, I want to turn it over to you.
Treasures report. So as the board um is used to seeing, right, we have all of our financial reports. There are some additional, a couple of additional reports that we do at this time of year in the end of the treasures report. But Dr. McBride, would you look at the financial reports, please? So as I pointed out last month, we did make a few changes to this, so we're, we're continuing to fine tune it a little bit. But um as you'll see, we've, we've got our cash and bank um kind of grouped again. You'll see the biggest impact on this statement. Our days cash on hand is at the bottom of the, of this report. And you'll see the impact of some of the work we've had to do at Central, right? So we talked about how that was going to deplete cash, days cash on hand, but you can, you can see that in the operations and maintenance fund now. Because we are, this is as of August thirty-first, which of course is right before fall collections, tax, property tax collection. So those are due September, right? So um since we haven't collected the second half of that levy, we are at a lower point. And we've just paid out burgling construction. So um that is clearly reflected in here, um, that we've, we've got that, um, depleting our operations and maintenance fund cash. And we're down in total to nine months' cash on hand, okay? As you'll see in the budget document going forward, we're still projected to hopefully um keep that back within the um guidelines of what the budget um goals are. And keep that around there or higher, of course. Are there any questions on the statement of position or, or this particular format of how we're showing? The cash separated at the top. The other piece that was new, of course, was the um from last month, was the activity reports, um, which are now a little bit more cumbersome. So um we're, we're working through trying to make this a little bit better um format for the board and add more graphs and such. That you'll see in budget preparation going forward. Do you have any questions on the August financial reports here? And again, there's our, there's our cash on hand and as we collect the September receipts from property taxes. I'll be asking our financial advisors at PMA to help us place those extra funds into, in, not extra, but to place those funds into investments that. property taxes, I'll be asking our financial advisors at PMA to help us place those extra funds into, not extra, but to place those funds into investments that will mature as the next six months go so that we can pay all of the bills. So right now, there's a little bit more sitting here in cash because we'll be investing after the fall collection period. So then hopefully by the end of September, it'll all be invested back out, and cash will be a little lower, investment will be ready and scheduled to pay all of the bills over the next six months before spring property taxes come in. Okay? Can you go back to the rest of the Treasurers Report? Yes, please. So the rest of the other reports are the deposits and bills that the board's going to approve, all the expenditures we're paying. If you wanted to see all the details of all those things, that's the bills payables report. But on the bottom, I did make a couple of notations about our five-year, now that the board will be approving the budget, the next steps will be, we're going to update the five-year projection, right? So that'll be coming in future months. It'll be another bigger thing that I'll be working on, right? This is still the last one that we updated when we were working through amending last year's budget. So this will be updated after we, after the board approves this budget. That starts the, that piece of information feeds into this report that I use with Forecast Five to help kind of project where we will be over the next five years. And then, of course, that will be, once I develop that template for this, once I load all of the updated information in, as the board works with the Master Facility Planning Committee to determine where our facilities will go, those types of things can be fed into this so that we can see what would that do, right, for finances, so. Okay, and then the last thing in the Treasurers Report is, this is the time of year that part of our collective bargaining agreement is union dues. We withhold union dues for our union members. So they give us the certification to say what we're supposed to withhold, so that's just notification. And then, along with the budget, this Public Act 97 to 59 and Open Meetings Act reporting talks about our salaries and benefits and our employees that fall under the certified or licensed staff group that we report to the state, as well as our group of employees that participate in Illinois Retirement Fund, which are support staff employees. There are legal requirements for us to have the board see this report along with the budgeting and then post these things on our website, salary and compensation reporting. So that's the other thing you'll see in here, which is a once-a-year reporting requirement, so make sure that the board sees it and approves it. And then, once the board approves this Treasurers Report, I can then post this on our website, update that report. And then, same thing with the budget, later in the agenda, when the board approves that, I will update what's on the website as well for our budget. Any questions on the rest? Oh, one last thing, and this is what's coming up. I always like to kind of give the board an idea of the major things that will be coming up, and of course, the biggest thing coming up in the next few months will be tax levy related. We move from, as Hugueney says, we move from the budget season to the tax preparation season, right, the levy season. So it's time for us to talk about, after the board approves the expenditures and the budget, how are we going to fund those? What does that levy need to look like, or what does the board desire that levy to look like? So those will be the next major things that will be approved from the finance side of things. Any questions on the Treasurers Report before we move a little bit into the budget?
Can you remind me of what we decided about cash on hand, how many months?
So we were talking about, Dr. McBride and I will be at some point revising or proposing that the board revise our goal, board goal, right? Last month, we did not have the board change a policy, but we will be, Dr. McBride and I will be bringing forth a potential revision to the goal for this year. And so that, it's not set until the board approves that change in the goal, because right now, we're still at six to 12 months. But proposed would be more like six to nine, eight to nine, something like that.
Have we spread down some?
We have, and that's exactly what that statement of position shows. So right now, we're at nine months' cash on hand. Soon as we do, get the collections, it'll go back up, and then it'll go back down, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and that's actually a very good transition to the budget because there's even more expected spend-down in this next budget, right? Like, what we just spent down here, what you've seen in the Treasurers Report, is reflected in the budget, right? That's what's being spent down.
And a lot of what we'll talk about, the number of items I aligned to your May 20th resolution, right? You gave us a limit of $26.2 million in life safety bonds. We'll talk about beginning steps in that process. Tonight, we're not selling bonds, we're not approving projects, but we're making the first necessary step. You also approved a range of $10 to $12 million in fund balances to be spent, and you directed that money towards the CCC, the Lockport Academy Americans with Disability Act at Central, and if we do spend out all of those fund balances, there definitely will be, you know, decrease in fund balances that would require you not to go below your policy, which is a floor of five months of cash on hand. But right now, you're ceiling with 12 months on cash on hand, kind of getting more on the reality of what that resolution intends, which is about eight to nine months of cash on hand. So we'll bring that to you.
I understand, I would use the wrong word, I know. Well, we voted to, I call it rebate, it's not rebate.
The abatement?
Oh, rebate.
How does that impact the cash on?
The abatement is another part of, that's part of the use of fund balance, right? Because if we're not having, if we're asking the county clerk's office to abate the debt service levy for our bonds, that means we're not bringing money in to pay that debt payment, so we would have to use funds we already have.
So the county does it?
Right now, the county would automatically, with the board not, if the board did nothing regarding the debt service tax levies, the county would automatically extend the levies that were approved back in 2017 and 2019 when the bonds were issued. So the board, if the board wants to abate that back to the taxpayers, then that's why resolutions would need to be approved in December, saying that. And then those resolutions get filed with the county clerk so that they don't extend that.
We did it for last year, though, right?
We did for last year, correct. So for the 2023 tax levy, the board approved those last December, and I filed them with the clerk, and that was not part of people's tax bills.
Do we see that in our reports, or is it invisible?
There are places you could see it. You'll see that there's no property, there's less property taxes collected, so.
Due to that abatement, right?
Correct.
So we have basically, in a simple sense, when we come to levy time, we can say, here's our levy and our debt service levy. We're going to ask the taxpayers to fund this budget and fund our bond payments. We're going to put that payment on our taxpayers. In this case, what the Finance Facility Committee suggested, the board has talked about, you did last year, you said, we will assume that debt payment with our current fund balances. We will not pass that cost on to the taxpayers. The best way to think about it is, doing that action, you're going to assume the responsibility of that. It discounts our property tax, not by an enormous amount by any means, but it basically just eases that back, you know, on each taxpayer because that's an additional burden that the community is not going to pay. Our fund balances will pay.
Is there some kind of way you could show that or reflect it, or?
It is, it's in the financial report. So Dr. McBride, will you go to the financial report?
Yeah.
Please. So if you would look at the, let's look at the revenue report, the statement of revenue, a few pages down. So here, so if we look at the debt service fund, so if you look at the debt service fund from last year, this would be better if I, and again, this is some of the things we want to start showing a little clearer, right, the types of revenue instead of just local funds. But if you look at, the far-left column is the prior year, so it's last year, right now, okay, where these columns on the right, these three columns on the right are this year, the 25-year, others are 24. So the $165,000 of local resources or local sources last year is a small part interest income, but mostly a property tax collection, right? And then, in this year, you don't see that. You see in where we've got, we just had interest income, and then, see how it drops off, I guess is my point. And then, instead, you have an other financing source. The other financing source is the transfer from the education fund. So the left column only shows what's to date as of August. This would be clearer if we were looking at a full year.
We did the transfer because we were paying for that.
Correct.
We made up for the debt.
Right, the debt service payments, the bond payments have to come out of the operation, or the debt service fund. So if we don't take property taxes into that fund, we need to move money into it to cover those bond payments, because otherwise, the fund would be negative, because we're paying $1.3 million in bond payments and interest payments on those two issues combined. And if we don't tax, the levy that was intended to pay for those originally, we have to get the money from somewhere, so we're moving it from the operation, the education fund, not the operation. So part of the resolutions that were approved last year directed me to transfer money in July and January to cover the payments that were due at those times. Some existentiality questions?
I think, yeah.
Okay. So it is in here, and where you see it is in the reduction of the tax revenue, as well as the interfund transfers between the education fund and the debt service fund. That's where the, you know, abatement is seen. Okay? And so in the budget documents, which I think that's what we're moving to next, right?
Right, I just jumped there. If everybody's ready to do that, just, you know, this would be the moment, kind of with Mrs. Croy up there, you'll vote later on on the budget. September is a legal limit, it's a deadline, it's a real deadline that you have to act on a budget. And, you know, probably I think the most fingertip, the document, is this document, which is also electronic, you know, as well, so this is a good time to ask any questions about this budget. There's a number of links in here, all of which you technically have to approve, the Illinois State Board of Education form. Very difficult form to read, very hard if you're not someone like Mrs. Croy, understand that. So Mrs. Croy spends a good amount of time creating something like this, there'll be additional narration to this in the next month, to help it for taxpayers, for the community, for you to understand what is happening with each one of these funds, what does this budget intend to do. And like Mrs. Croy said earlier, this budget, we do have to declare revenue, but it's primarily a declaration to you and to the community, these are the expenditures that we planned to expand this year. It's a spending plan in essence. You'll vote at different times because you're the seven people who approve every expenditure every month, and the tax, the debt service abatement, that's an expenditure that you would approve in December, because that's one way to think of it, it's when it comes due, when you have to signal to the Will County Tax Assessor, you do not want them to do a portion of a levy related to debt service. You will take on that cost yourself as a board through your fund balances. That's the timing of that.
So as Dr. McBride said, you do have a number of links of documents in this board action item. I believe what you may have printed is the graphs and all the detail, right?
Right.
So that's going to be your?
The fund summaries and detailed budget.
Yeah, your fund summaries and every line item, right? And in that, it does compare all those line items to two different things, last year's amended budget and last year's actual figures. So, you know, you kind of can get an idea, you know, for example, looking at the education fund summary, which would probably be page two in that document. It lists your, the salaries, employee benefits, purchase services, et cetera, from year to year, right, for the this year and then last year's two pieces. So then you can see that, you know, there's $58 million, this particular page includes the transfers, too. So then you can see the comparison between the two pieces. The other documents that are in your board action include the resolution that will be the board to approve to adopt this budget, as well as the legal form Dr. McBride referenced. That form is the only form that all board members have to indicate their vote on, so every board member has to sign that. Normally, it's just the president and the secretary that sign most documents that the board approves, but in this case, all of you would be asked to sign in the column that says you voted yea or nay. Okay? And there's also a certification of the budget that needs to be, it's a technical document that, you know, just another piece that needs to be approved. And then, I included comparisons. So for date, you know, more than 30 days, since the board approved the tentative, we've had the tentative budget on the district's website. So there's a document that's included here that shows what are the differences. So what changed from the tentative to the actual? So there are a number of line items that are listed and identified, every single one of why they changed. So the primary reasons have been listed out here for the board. So instead of looking at every line item, the primary reasons that things changed were related to salaries and benefits of hiring staff, right, finishing hiring. State and federal grant applications were finalized for the new year, right? That's not to say we don't, we can't amend those grants as things go on, but, and things may change throughout the year, but the applications were submitted, so those are included in there. Operations and maintenance budget was finalized, as Mr. Thompson and his crew was finalizing, okay, what were we finishing up this year, what might we still want to do the rest of this year, and start next summer as far as maintenance and custodial work. So we adjusted some numbers there between some repairs and maintenance items. Tuition expenditures were adjusted because we received our registration information from WOCO, and there were some new, some more students there than I had originally expected. So that's a great thing with our students doing some of those career and college career programs, right, certification things. Dues and fees, that is a specific kind of hangover thing from last year. It was specifically due to tolls. Because the district is a cash basis district, that means there are many things that are really actually incurred expenditures last year, but we didn't pay it until July, so now it becomes part of this year's budget. Our last quarter of tolls expenditures from the travel back and forth to Lincoln Way every day, that increased that line item.
And so in essence, you know, this entire electronic document has a, Stephanie's put a notation.
Yeah.
Every place why there's been a change, you know, so that board members understand how things, evidence-based funding came in higher than we thought when the state legislator acted, right? We did put the debt service abatement in here.
That was for the next.
You're approving the budget, that's not approving the actual payment, that comes later. So maybe if we just kind of pause for a second and open up any questions that you have, you can see this is very complex and very layered, you know, just remind the board, we authorized this in January, July tentative, and then we're going to work all the way to here. Yeah, Bronn, thanks, Dr. Shaw.
I'm a good student, I guess. All right, so when we're looking at like salaries and benefits, things like that, those are combined, when you're, when we're looking at the number?
It depends on what page you're on.
Okay.
Because those are by fund.
Things circled.
That particular document is by fund. Everything is reported by fund.
Yes. I believe I'm in the ed部门.
Yes. If you wanted to look at things in total, the whole, the whole district, all funds included, I did do have some summarized data that I pulled today, or that I pulled back together today. I did not have time to add to that.
Yeah, I'm speaking more so like when we look at individual salaries, if they look different from the contracts that we see in board docs, they include the benefits in the line items, correct?
I think that's what you, let me rephrase your question, let me make sure I understand.
So if I, so when we approve contracts for administrators, for example, they're listed individually here some places. If I look at the contract that's in board docs on their base salary versus what's in here, it's a little higher because of benefits, correct?
For administrators, yes, because the contract includes TRS.
Yes, yes. And then, just for the public's knowledge, when we see a few things, so if we had something in our 2024 actual, and then it's no longer showing up, and it says ESR that's funding, we're no longer getting.
Right.
So just so that everybody knows we didn't lose money.
Correct.
We're getting the tail end of it as we finish it up for the last couple of months, and that's.
I actually, yeah, that's.
A little bit left.
Could you define ESR for the community?
Yeah, so that was related to the coronavirus situation, right? There were three rounds of funding, and the ARP, ESR funds are the last group of it. And the share that the district received was a couple of million dollars total for that particular piece. Most of it was spent last year. Like I said, there's just a tail end of it that's being finished up. It's actually already spent as of today, but the revenue is being collected this next month or so. So, yes, there are a number of line items then, if you're looking at every line item that would have been for a grant last year, but now this year doesn't exist.
So, like I noted, the other local revenue under the fund is 1.2-ish million lower than it was last year? Is that tied to what?
So, other local, we'd have to look at all of the breakdown of what other local includes. So, Ed Fund for other local revenue includes a number of things, so that's why it's easier said than done to actually identify that, but.
Oh, okay, ask any questions then?
Yeah.
They'll be pulling out all kinds of paper.
Other local is, you know, 1.4 this year versus 1.7 last year. And it includes a whole slew of things, including, one of the biggest decreases is actually related to our feeder district lunch program in that group, okay? Because last year, maybe it feels like it was even longer than that ago, the federal government said that the, our two feeder districts that we used to provide the satellite lunch program for, through, forced them to do their own bid. So, they could no longer directly go through us. So, therefore, we're not collecting the revenue for that, and we won't have expenditures related to that. So, that's one piece of that, that's one of the bigger pieces in that grouping of revenue. And there'll be expenditures also that won't exist for that particular situation. So, we're still, they're actually still using our kitchens, West is still using our kitchens. So, there will be some small, I think, I don't remember how much it was per meal or something, that we were going to be receiving to allow them to still use our facility to run that program. But they'll be billing directly District 89 and District 91.
What's corporate, corporate?
Corporate, personal property replacement taxes?
You say it so quickly.
CBPRT. Yeah, well, what they are, I'd have to go look up the definition of exactly what they are. They're related to corporations, and it's a replacement tax instead of the property tax. There's a small piece of, I don't remember what they're actually being taxed on there, but it, that varies from year to year, and the Illinois Department of Revenue tells us about how much we're going to expect for that. It actually did the opposite of most things during the COVID pandemic. It went way up. Like way up, like we were over a million dollars more during the last few years than we've ever been. So, now it's going back down to more like normal levels. So, yeah, that's just one of the local taxes. I'd have to look up exactly on the Illinois Department of Revenue site what it actually is for, that those companies are being taxed for, but it's a corporate tax. Do you have a question?
Were students on free and reduced lunch? Is that something that we pay for, or is it like grants that we get from the state?
So, the district pays for those meals, yes. We do get reimbursed a small per meal amount from the state, but we are not a member of, or we're not a participant in the participating district in the National School Lunch Program. There are a number of school districts that are, and our feeder districts, District 91 and District 89 are, and that was why they were, it's being part of that National School Lunch Program that made them have to do their own bid. So, we are not part of that program. We were for the couple of years during the pandemic in order to provide everyone with meals. That's why we did it at that time. It's not normally beneficial to the district or to our students, actually, because there are a lot of restrictions with it. And they're very specific as far as the size of the meals, the types of the meals that we can offer. We can offer a lot more flexibility in our food program if we are not part of that.
We would have been.
We might, but it probably would not be part of the plated meal, which is one of the options given to our free students who get free meals. There's actually three options we allow them to have every day. They could have a deli sandwich, they could have the plated meal that's on the calendar of meals every day. And I believe that there is a fast food option as well, whether it's a burger or a chicken sandwich or something every day. So, they have three different options to choose from here. Where if it was a National School Lunch Program, it'd be the plated meal and that'd be it. That's one of the differences.
And what is that, which fund is that a part of?
All the Education Fund.
Okay.
Everything in the Education Fund, everything that to run the whole program that affects students is in that fund. It's the bulk of our expenditures, right? So, all teachers, administrators, support staff, all of the supplies for your classrooms, the lunch program, all of that is part of the Education Fund. Parts of running the building are part of the Operations and Maintenance Fund, and all of the busing services are really, are in the Transportation Fund.
Do we have a row-up slide that has all the funds together to show like total budget all the way across?
I mean, I may have sent that to Dr. McBride at like 5:35 today. So, we may not have it ready, but we can share it, and I do have there.
Did you actually send it to me?
But that's because I didn't have a chance to talk to you when you were walking out.
I was not running away from you.
It is not, I was not prepared, the day disappeared on me, it was a Monday. If we looked at, so, total expenditures from, and if we compare to last year, I did a couple of pieces, right?
There's something behind you.
Oh, thank you. So, these are some in total, right? It's similar to what's in here by fund, but in total. So, Dr. McBride, can you go to the next slide, please? There's just like four of them or five of them. So, this is just expenditures by fund, so that you can see like this.
Seen this already, that's, these individual slides are already in, you know, what your materials we have right now.
So, this is what you were talking about in total, I believe, right? So, this is, it doesn't show you dollars, but it is showing you changes, right? So, if you look at the bars on the top that are kind of like a teal color, those are last year's budget, and the purple is this year's budget. And so, you can see kind of the increases, decreases by all of the types of things. Overall, last year's budget compared to this year's budget is a 1.25% decrease, actually. And each of the pieces you can see are, the majority of them are, there's a couple increases, a couple decreases, but it's by piece, right? So, salaries, you were talking, Dr. Shaw, salaries in total compared to last year's budget are about a 3% increase in total, right? And that, part of that has to do with, I know we've presented to the Board before about our hiring strategies, and so, that allows us to manage staff. As higher cost staff retire, we are replacing them often with a lower cost employee, which allows us to keep the costs lower and still provide great compensation to our employees. Employee benefits increased about 3%. We did have increases in our health and dental insurance this year, so that is the bulk of that increase. Whereas other parts of the, what we consider employee benefits, like Medicare required payments, social security required payments, TRS and IMRF, those have not increased percentage-wise. So, when you net all of that out, it comes to a 3.16. Purchase services are a decrease, that's the line item that Lincoln Way Rent came out of and a number of other things. So, last year it was higher than this year. Supplies are a decrease as well, capital outlays a decrease as well. We did have a lot of capital outlay happening last year, finishing up some projects that we had planned, and then everything that happened at Central. Debt service payments continue to decrease as we pay down these bonds. Student activities, that varies, and really, it could increase or decrease depending on what all the clubs plan to do with their funds, right? Because that's the fundraising and what the trust accounts do. And then, other objects, tuition is pretty flat, actually, 0.77, so. So, that's the slide, I think, that you were looking for when you were asking me about comparison and in total.
If we would remove the 4.46 million for the ceiling repairs, what is the, is there a net increase year over year? If we were going to basically say Central was operating as normal, you know, there was nothing, emergency that happened as if it was a normal school year? That's probably not a straight line connection between that.
It's not, because we would have done other capital projects potentially, so it might not have been a, okay, 4 million difference, right? There are regular capital projects that are done every year, so funds might have been diverted other places. But the easiest way to see the operating increases or changes is actually in the document you have. Because the operating funds are education, operations, and maintenance and transportation. And those are less impacted by capital projects type things.
I mean, I think the overall slide really tells the picture of this, you know. What I would say is this Board is doing salary containment, and by far, you know, even though we have some friends from Burglum Construction here tonight, and our architects, by far, in a people business dwarfs right now expenditures on operations and maintenance and on building. It just does. Management of that, management of the overall budget, you're seeing a decrease. Management of the tax rate, which continues to decline, doing things like the debt service abatement, giving at least a discount when you can give a discount, selecting to use some fund balances on some construction projects, using life safety bonds, which we'll also talk about, Eric Sickbert's here in my superintendent report, which allows you to spread the payment of those life safety bonds over 30 years now for the first time, lowering the cost on the taxpayer. These are all just ways that we try to steady our finances to keep on providing the facilities and the services that we provide for students. And doing, you know, it's constantly, I think, you know, imagine Mrs. Croy, the rudder of a boat, constantly, as a wave hits, as a wind hits, adjusting that rudder to kind of keep us on course, if you could use that analogy.
Yeah, I just want to say to the staff behind and you and you, you know, to be able to present to the community a budget that's less than it was last year is just, it's phenomenal. And the negotiations that we had with our staff, obviously, salaries are a gigantic piece of our annual budget, and to be able to maintain the quality of our education, to maintain the quality of our staff, to retain as many staff as we do, I just think is hats off to everybody that's in the back there, as well as the two of you, because there aren't a lot of schools that can do that. And I feel proud to be a piece of that, for sure.
We both know it's an enormous effort, you know, with so many people involved. There's fingerprints of everyone on this, you know. If we don't have people controlling costs, being thoughtful at the department chair level, we can't achieve this.
Looking for additional places that they can save money, everyone does it.
And the, you know, the budget last year to the actual being even reduced from the, from the budget to the actual from last year, I mean, that just shows cost containment in action while you're making those decisions in real time. To just be able to manage that throughout the entire year is really good. And whether it occurs this year or not, my guess is that we have a pretty steady tracker of doing that, which, you know, just goes to, you know, staff making good decisions, administration making good decisions about and being respectful of the taxpayers' dollars and how we use it and going after grants and other things that can offset some of those costs that would otherwise be passed on to the taxpayer. So, kudos to everybody.
Any other questions on the budget items? Thank you.
Thanks a lot, great work, Stephanie, excellent.
Thank you. All right, then, do I have a motion to approve the August 2024 Treasurers Report?
I'm Lou.
Second?
It's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Mr. Tease. Roll call.
Garrison?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Tease?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez-Carina?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to our superintendent report.
All right, a couple of things that you don't see there that I do want to mention. In a minute, I'm going to ask Eric Sickbert. We do have two gentlemen from Burglum Construction here that are joining us. Did you guys mind introducing yourselves? You're familiar to me, but not to our Board. Who are you people?
My name is Hansel Whitehouse, I'm Senior Vice President with Burglum Construction.
And I'm Neil Offerman, I'm the Senior Project Manager for Burglum Construction. I was one that was working at Central all summer, so.
Yeah, literally, I met Hansel on a walk-around, and then also Neil was there pretty much every day. So, we're probably going to have Burglum come back next month when we're not doing the budget and do it just to sort of sharing out about their experience working inside of Central. What do these construction professionals have to say about, about, you know, really getting their hands dirty in that project? So, thanks for joining us this evening. Before I have Eric come up, just a couple of things. It is Mexican Independence Day, our largest growing demographic is Hispanic, and it's a great reason to celebrate. You know, if you're like me, I enjoy all the Mexican flags and all the cars in Chicagoland. I want to thank Jeanette Castillo, who tonight provided a little sweet treat, a little Mexican sweet bread. You know, so that was nice for our families coming in, just like, you know, a nice little accent just adds so much. I think our diversity makes us strong. School safety, thank you to Mr. Tease, we really appreciate that. In school administrator life, I'm sure we all have this moment, everyone here, where you get, you know, contacted at 9:30 at night, that there's a, you know, malicious social media post going on. And I'm sure our Director of Public Relations likes my call for at 9:39 on a Sunday night, and we have work to do, how exciting that I'm back on the phone at 6:25 a.m. It's wonderful, you know. But truly, I would echo what Mr. Tease said, people just rallied, were thoughtful, communicating often, working with the Lockport Police, this is what, you know, unfortunately, modern safety and security involves. We deal with the phenomena of school violence, we deal with the phenomena of social media, and both can make it very, very difficult. And I think all of us have honed our skills about what's a credible threat, what's not. And praise the Lord, it was not a credible threat, never wanted to be.
Did you get a lot of trouble?
No, we didn't, I think we got ahead of it. What we did get, what we were very proud of, and you should be very proud of it, we get a lot of proper handling. Meaning, one of the worst things that community members can do, and I just, unfortunately, I can't criticize this enough, is people take those social media posts and repost them. It's, it does so much damage, because now it creates a situation where the police and the administration have to chase that problem. We had a high level of people emailing us, or emailing a staff member, or an administrator, or contacting law enforcement, correct move. People use our crisis go, I've seen this. So, we had a high level of people use the right channel. It wasn't until about 2 o'clock today that I saw on Lockport Community, someone repost. And I just can't tell people, you, the people who are trying to do mischief of posting those on social media, you are doing their handiwork, you are aiding and abetting them. You are helping to force other school districts to go into e-learning. And I just can't stress enough, just contact law enforcement, contact a school administrator, contact a staff member, trust it all. And we had that in a very, so we had really the community's help on this. And then, just you communicate, 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 we, you know, within 12 hours communicated three times. So, that one went wrong too. I want to acknowledge, as we heard earlier, Sarah Steinke, last year, Bill Kane was Illinois Science Teacher of the Year. It's rare that you get another finalist, you know, in the top three, but Sarah Steinke's in the top three, and that's accomplishment. You don't even even mention. Speaking of accomplishment, distinguished alumni, Dr. John Green at St. Francis University. So, at Homecoming, Dr. John Green, our very own, will be honored for his distinguished alumni status. That's pretty cool, right? Pretty neat, neat things happening. Couple of things, your Fall Board Workshop is this Saturday, it's all about communications. I'll be sending you a few things, we'll publish an agenda, we hope, tomorrow. You'll be working with IASB, and then also Holly Bartekki, who we also met with IASB. I think Anne and I have tried to work to make that a meaningful conversation between you. It's one part communication strategy, one part Board self-evaluation. So, I hope you enjoy it, we'll have some breakfast treats available at 8:30. 9 o'clock, we'll have a hard start, we will take a break for lunch. But if you don't fill out your form today, tonight, Kathy said you get no. said you get no lunch. She's very strict about it, you know what I mean? And I'm saying that as a reminder myself, because everybody in this room knows the world's worst lunch respondent would be Dr. McBride. So, terrible at it. So, please, any questions about Saturday, I think it'll be time well spent. Parent Square Training, I really want to commend. This is a vision of Mrs. Castillo. Parent Square is a tool that we use to do all of our communications. One of the things that it has is a great language capability. Everything that goes out is sent in the requested home language. Spanish, Polish, Filipino. You can't believe some of the, we have people who are receiving their messages in Uyghur.
Oh, we have somebody who's receiving it in Filipino?
We do. And so, she led and, and had a Parent Square individual come in, trainer come in, did a, did a very large training with administrators. Great, great, great job. Facilities Master Planning, our next event is going to be September twenty-third. That's a week from tonight. We're going to meet, we're going to be really looking at the impact of special education and athletics on facilities. Usually, Mr. Teese and Mrs. Lopez Caniva join us at six-thirty PM. We're going to be back in the science wing, just kind of being the newest part of, of the district. I'm going to have Mr. Sickbert, do you mind joining us? And I want to, want to pause, and I think this is a really good time to, for life safety work, further down in the agenda, and what I'd like to do is, I think I printed this out, if I can locate where I printed it out for you.
Can I have a request?
Yeah.
You, you, sir, have sussed me out, and I think in the interest of student interest, you shall sit on the bar stool.
I think you have to experience with the people our experience.
Got to come to Caniva.
So, yeah, we're going to, we're assuming you guys can eat these. So, Eric is here. Further in your agenda is the approval of life safety work. And I want to describe both to the community and the board, just to make sure everyone understands what you're approving tonight. You are not approving twenty-six point two million dollars in bonds, and you are not approving a project for Mr. Sickbert and his colleagues to, to work on. What you're approving is a list that will go to the state for them to decide these projects qualify as life safety or not. Where that will help us is once they qualify for life safety, you can use life safety bonds to finance them. And I just always appeal, you know, many people in this room, many of the adults in this room, have used debt wisely to purchase a home, to purchase a car, to lower the payment over time in a responsible way. And, you know, most recently, the use of debt has come under criticism, but I believe it's one of the most fiscally responsible things that a board can do, because the facilities in the district are the most enduring and permanent aspects of the district. And so, it's a reinvestment in the physical property of, of the community, and now with some new tools from the state, we can, you know, spread that out over thirty years and have that kind of control we were just talking about in, in the budget. So, I really wanted to turn it over to Eric to, to, to suggest what we're thinking, where we're going with this, also some of the things that we think are in alignment with your May twentieth resolution, to start getting at some of the most practical and essential things. We have some on that list that are at East, too, but we're really, you know, taking a look at Central in the, in the front. So, Eric, just things you would like to share?
Good evening, everyone. It's glad to be in front of you all again and seeing the wonderful faces. First off, I'd like to just kind of start with life safety, and there's a lot of confusion about what that is. The, the actual title of it is kind of misleading to a certain degree. They call life safety and, and for a reason, that they actually mandated, I don't know, about nineteen fifty, that school districts need to review their buildings every ten years for the safety of them, because throughout the years, schools, schools do start to show wear and tear and need to be corrected, and, and the janitors or the people working inside the facilities really don't know code. So, they really wanted the professionals to go into the facilities to check out, to see if the, the buildings are still maintaining the codes that they were built under. That's every ten years. But in the process of that, if a district says, hey, we have this issue similar to what happened to Lockport occur, can you come and take a look at it and make an amendment to that ten-year survey? That's what's basically happening tonight. We're bringing an amendment to your ten-year survey. We did take a look, and, and there's a few other items, obviously, that we became aware of, that the Central specifically needs to be addressed or could be addressed under life safety, under that life safety title. And Dr. McDermidore talked about the fact that it's just allowing you to spend funding, if you have that funding available, under the life safety bonding capacity. So, it's a kind of long-drawn-out process, but I think it's very important and critical to make sure that your schools are maintained in a, in a safe environment or safe status. Tonight, we're, there's about a list of ten items that are on that list, and some of them are already been taken care of, and I think they're, we're going to give it a shot to say if, some of the work that we did this summer, we, we put on the list to see if we can actually get approval for that life safety spending, getting to the point of, okay, now you can kind of do the, the budgeting more efficiently by using life safety funding with it. But also, there's a few new items that we discovered that weren't taken care of this last summer, and we'd like to try to get it captured maybe next summer, if we can, some of these projects. Other ones can be deferred a little bit further out. Some of the things that we really think that are critical, that should be addressed, and this is, I guess, would be decided later, but something to, to consider is the roofs. We, as the architects, always go to districts and say, really take care of your outside of the building, keeping the water outside of the building, not inside the building, because once water gets inside a facility, it really starts deteriorating, accelerating deterioration of the materials that are in there. And I think we obviously have seen some signs of that, quite a bit of signs of that through the project that we just did this summer. So, roofs would be one of our primary objectives or recommendations to the district, to take care of your roofs. Let's get those roofs replaced, get them watertight so that we don't have water infiltration into the building. Also, tuck pointing. Even though masonry is a very durable product, it does may, need some maintenance as well. And tuck pointing is basically, the, the grout joints, they become very porous and water can start to infiltrate within those joints. So, tuck pointing is basically grinding out all those grout joints and resealing them with new grout. So, that's basically what tuck pointing is. That, again, helps the water from infiltrating through the wall systems that you have there. So, highly recommend to do that. Through the process of, of this summer and replacing the ceilings, we found out there's quite a bit of cloth wiring still inside that building. Highly recommend that that, that wiring gets replaced soon. Not a very safe way to bring electricity into the classroom. So, those are our, our high, are pretty much high priority items that we think that need to be taken care of for possibly the next summer. Would recommend the next summer. There's some masonry rebuilding that we also would recommend as well. When we were doing some of this, we took care of the most urgent, but there's still some masonry repair that needs to be taken care of, and we would recommend to do that along with the tuck pointing for the masonry. We have some switchgear that's pretty much very old in the building. We don't know necessarily if we will be able to get it for next summer, but that would be further down the line as far as urgent to take care of, but it should be on the, on the list of thinking that we're going to need to do this soon, so.
And there is, yeah, there's orders, these projects. For example, you have a five million dollar investment in new ceilings. Most of those new ceilings are on the third floor. Imagine if you don't take care of the roof that's above those ceilings, and, you know, you have an issue, right? There are some other life safety plans that would require more modern electricity before you start putting those, those components in. The exterior building, as Eric said, critical when it's masonry, that, that work's done. And, you know, Burglum led us through a challenging project with some interior masonry that you know about, but the longer that that's put off, the more costly that gets, the more impact it can have on the building, the more infiltration you can get, the more problematic it could be. You know, so our hope is that the state would agree with this, they would certify all of this, certify this amendment, say yes, and then we would get into the, the work of actually looking at what the priorities are. And Eric, I don't know if you can share, just like, if we were, what would be a timeline if we're just thinking about bidding, getting summer work done? You mentioned roof, electric, exterior envelope, tuck pointing. If you had to walk out for the board, a, a timeline to start getting at that, what, what would that be?
We would highly recommend going as, putting it on an accelerated schedule to get your best pricing. If we can get out to bid in November, latest in January, that would, you get your best pricing. What happens in school construction, Burglum can let you know this, but in school construction, and all the contractors know, you got a, you got the three to four months to do the construction work, and so they really get busy and filled up, and you only have so much you can do in a summer. So, then, once they get filled up, then the numbers start coming up, right? You know, supply and demand. So, we would really recommend getting out on the street as quickly as possible to try to capture the best pricing that you can. Just a, a note that I failed to mention is, even though we, you approve of this, all these items here, that yes, that we think these are life safety items and we want them to be submitted, they first go to the ROE, and the ROE then reviews them and say, well, yes or no. They could say, no, these items, we're not going to classify as life safety items. We are, some of these are gray, so we're, we're giving them a shot. It doesn't hurt to say, you know, try, and if they say no, then they say no, but at least we tried. And then it goes downstate, and then they give you authorization, yes, it is or it isn't. So, some of this stuff might not make it, but we're hoping and we're thinking that there's a good chance that they will. So, just to give you a caveat on that. But getting back to the schedule, yes, as quickly as we can, that would be best for the district for their efficiency of their funding.
And then, you know, a few thoughts of what it's talked about. You know, as you look at these, these are cost opinions. I found, you know, DLA very accurate on cost opinions. But, you know, bidding actually is, is real cost when construction companies. So, we're, we're still thinking about a construction manager to air traffic control this, to come alongside, be, be a third partner. We need to do that. Next month, I'll be talking about potentially having PMA Financial come and brief you on if you sell life safety bonds, timing, how, how PMA might recommend that you do that, so you have a little bit of bond sale literacy. I know next month, we have a huge report on academic achievement over the, you know, over a period of, of a year. And then, like I mentioned, also having Burglum come in my superintendent's report and do, like, we spent the summer at Central, what, what did we learn, you know, as construction specialists? So.
Yeah, we, our, our numbers aren't the actual cost. The contractors over there will tell you, once, once it gets bid out, that's the actual numbers, so.
Life safety, questions?
I just have a quick question. So, as you just mentioned that you, these are cost estimates and the, the real stuff doesn't come until the bids come back, but do you have a sense as to how things are, might look, anticipating, this is the estimate, and then by the time we actually go out to bid and get those back, you know, time has gone by? Do you have a sense of what that impact might be?
We try to build some of that into these numbers and also the unknowns. Definitely with Central, there's a lot of unknowns, so we try to build these numbers into that, some of that unknowns into these numbers. So, again, if we can dispense, again, if you, when, when we bid it, and what happens between when we go out to bid and the economy and what happened, because it is very cyclical and very impacted by the envi, the economy, so. But, yeah, we think we built most of that into, into these numbers, and we feel pretty confident that we have enough to cover what, what's to be done on each one of these line items.
Thinking about the schedule, would you lay it out? How quickly does the state and the ROE approve these lists?
Yeah, we're talking about the state, so we, we hope, depending on how many have already been submitted, but we're pretty much on the front end of all of that. So, I think what we're hearing on the grapevine is three to four weeks for them to come back with the review. And if the review is, yeah, you're good to go, then we're good to go. They might come back and say, can you, they might have some questions for us and say, can you clarify? We need more information. Can you send us some pictures? You know, they actually do start diving in a little bit deeper into some of these things, so that might delay it a little bit, but we're looking about three to four weeks to get the first review back from them.
So, thinking from a documentation standpoint to prep for bidding in November and/or December, do you perceive that we would be approving a contract for that work prior to receiving approval for the life safety bonds?
We could strategically, the first thing that you would approve is a memorandum of understanding, so that DLA, if, if we triangulate this, we feel, yes, let's look at roof, let's look at electrical, let's move forward with these. The memorandum of understanding empowers DLA to start doing the architectural planning to create bids, bids, can't say it, bid specifications for the project. I would likely bring you an MOU next month, even if we haven't heard back from the state. The first step is your approval, but we haven't heard back from the state. If you approve that concept, depending on when we get back to the state, for example, if we're put in a position where now somehow we have to cherry pick, I would strongly recommend that, that you replace the roof. No doubt about it, right? And would get DLA working in that direction. It'd be hard-pressed to believe that electric and masonry wouldn't be on life safety, because it's so structural and it's safety. So, trying to kind of move with that so that we can go to bid, you know, as early as possible.
How long does it typically take the ROE to turn around?
Not very long.
Yeah, and the ROE is actually pretty quick. And I also think the state, you'll find about three weeks. I just had an occasion to speak to the CSBO of ISPE, if you want that, you know, that alphabet soup. A few weeks ago, who recommended getting it in, about three weeks. But there is a liberal atmosphere about it, because there's a recognition in some of the changes in life safety, that the school construction grant has not come through, and this is the state's effort to recognize that, you know, sixty-seven percent of schools in Illinois right now are in some kind of need of serious life safety work. That's a high percentage. And a lot of people believe that's related to the end of the school construction grant in two thousand and three. So, there's an understanding that we, we, we can't take advantage of those nice new tools you gave us in the summer unless we're getting, you know, our items approved.
Yeah, usually, if, if Eric has questions, they'll call us. It's like we have good relationships with them and have good communication with them, so. Unlike the state, where we'll just have to wait to hear back from them.
All right. Final piece, just, I'll, I'll be, you know, maybe we can talk offline about K-12 Innovate. Guiding Light, you know, next week at Facilities Master Planning, I'll have that survey. You know, want to check in with board members. You should have some kind of survey tool, some kind of surveying instrument that we use to verify. I think actually, if you really sit down with that survey, much of your decisions on May twentieth came from looking at the results of those surveys. Your, your decision aligned with that. Want to get a little sense of that product. If you like the reporting, if you like the work, I'm asking people, how did that go with Innovate K-12? So, that's the end of my report.
Can you go with the dates on the open house?
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to go back to that. Yeah, October third, tenth, and twenty-four. And very shortly, a mailer will go out about those kind of town hall forums. That mailer is off to be printed in mail, and the three hundred individuals that you reached out to in the summer will be reaching out directly, you know, inviting them to, to one of those, one of those three. Two are at East, one is at Central. The first two at October three and ten, and then October twenty-fourth is at Central.
And what kind of visitor?
Seven PM. That's really just an opportunity to hear, you know, do some participant validation. You did this survey. Did we hear you correctly? You know, are we on track? Thanks, Eric. Yeah, that's my report. Yeah, that's my report.
Yeah, curriculum report.
I know I'm Dr. Christopher, but I'm going to sit in her stead, she's at the conference this week.
I don't want to go over here.
So basically, she wanted to make sure that you knew that the board approved several summer projects, so this is one of the tags that I get to say, what's that, teachers are off in the summer? That really doesn't happen. And so she put together a really nice report about all of the different projects that they did. I'm going to selfishly talk about the guidance department, since I've been working very closely with them. Two of the big projects that they did is the new student success counselor. I think when I first proposed it, we called it an at-risk counselor, but we really feel that it's more in line with the work that she's doing, is to support students and grow their success. And so there's transition programming with our park program to support students who may be coming in and out of the school, and she's really come out of the box running to support those students. And then also, I know the students talked about the seeing their counselors more, and the compass groups and things like that, that was part of their summer projects that they did over the summer. I can talk specifically, I know the meeting's getting a little bit long, but if there's anything else that you guys want to ask about these projects that were happening over the summer, I'm happy to try to answer them for you. It's a lot of work done by teachers, a lot, a lot of work, yeah, yeah. I mean, AP with the students, increasing AP student coursework, there was lots of AP and challenging work for students as well, so I don't want to, we've talked about them a lot, though, so. All right, thank you.
Great, principal reports.
We are excited, because this year has really been off to a great start. As you saw, we had our curriculum night, and this is the first time in a couple of years that both of our buildings were open to our parents. As you know, the heat last year prevented us from having an in-person curriculum night at Central, but with everything that we've endured, we really wanted to get the parents into Central. So we did welcome parents at both campuses, and it was great for them to actually go through and walk their child's schedule, and we got a lot of positive feedback. As you can see in the reports, fall sports are off to a great start. We also are having our clubs starting to get kicked off with a lot of great events. We're very excited on the horizon, we actually will bring in forward some new clubs to you in the future, which is great, because it gets more kids connected to our school, and really fosters that sense of belonging. And then Dr. Johnson and I also are planning to do some things with our kids for leadership.
Yes.
You know, climate and culture is very important to us, so we actually will be bringing a team of our teachers to see Phil Boyd at Naperville, and doing a climate and culture summit, but then we also are going to have Phil Boyd come in and work with a large number of our students, and then we also have some opportunities to go to other schools with our student leadership kids.
Yes. One of the things that we did have a couple of weeks ago is senior sunrise. It was my first time experiencing a senior sunrise, and I just kept saying to the kids, I can't believe you're up right now, because it was really early in the morning, but the kids seemed to have a really good time, you know, they played games, had donuts, they made personalized picture frames, which I had never seen before, and I thought it was really cool, too. So that was one of the cool things that we got to see with senior sunrise. I have to echo what Carrie said about curriculum night, we had wonderful parents come to, you know, introduce themselves to us, you know, the new team, and then also toward their students' classes, they seemed to appreciate our Sunday messages, everyone is talking about these Sunday messages.
Expectation.
Yes, it is completely an expectation. Go, yes. And finally, just, we're excited about homecoming next week. You know, they keep telling me, you have no idea what you're about to experience next week, and, I mean, like, I was a high schooler, I worked in schools, but I don't think that I can even, I can't wrap my brain around what I'm going to experience, but I have seen some of the videos of like, what it is like here, so I'm excited for that, because it feels like a real high school, like, almost like High School Musical, and the kids, yes.
They have to warn me.
Yeah, so we're all in this together. But one of the coolest things I did get to do more recently is to go through, you know, go to some lunches and talk to some kids, just about, how is it going for them, like, what are they experiencing, and, you know, they kept reiterating a couple of things. One, they love the programming, so I, somehow I found a lot of sophomores, and so they love just having all of the opportunities and options of classes to take, and the clubs, and everyone wanted to show me what they were thinking about wearing for homecoming, and so we talked a lot about dresses, and just attire in general, but ultimately, you know, it's been a really good start to the school year, and September has been pretty good thus far.
I love that you dyed your hair porter maroon.
Yes, I will tell you, Lance, this was not necessarily the color, I was like, this is what I wanted to look like, and this is how it turned out, and so.
We had a world-class earlier conversation about fresh haircuts and highlighting.
Yes.
Highfalutin.
Yes, first time ever dying my full hair in my life.
Can I ask you, just really quickly, Carrie, can you highlight, can you explain to the board what Wayfinder Week is?
Yes, so Wayfinder Week, we're actually doing Wayfinder Week, where our staff is opening their classrooms, their offices, all of the spaces in Central Campus, and other staff members on their CMP and during their team times are going in and observing, and it's great, and they're leaving little sticky notes with positive feedback, and giving accolades, and just positive comments to everything that they're seeing. So we're super excited about that taking place, so much that I think we're going to ask our staff at Central to go into during their team time, one day a month, to go in and observe other teachers. It's a great way for us to grow professionally, to build each other up, and support each other, and the success that we're having in the classroom, that way it can impact, you know, all of our students. But yeah, we're real excited about Wayfinder Week, so, anyways, welcome to come on in and see a couple, a couple of classes or offices, everything.
Avery?
So what would the student leadership group look like? You said you guys would be strengthening that?
Yes.
So, we do, well, we have many different student leadership groups over here at East. What we do at the freshman center every year is I put feelers out to teachers, coaches, sponsors, and say, hey, give me some kids who are really a great example of best self, best work, and who can really foster a great climate and culture, and also porter pride, you know, trying to really emphasize, you know, wearing your maroon on Friday, and knowing what it is to be a porter. And so we kind of put together a group of students and come up with different events, and then over here, I know that, you know, Dr. Johnson, you want to talk about your group?
Yeah, so we're going to start a principal advisory council, where our first student meeting at the beginning of the year, I presented to the entire student body, and just said, if you're interested in gaining leadership skills, and having a voice, and being a part of, you know, strengthening the culture and climate of the school, please send, you know, us an email, just letting us know you're interested, and so now, we've received some feedback from some students, and we're going to reach out to them, to invite them to our first meeting. We've had students that were a part of the principal advisory council in the past, and so we're going to let them know, too, that they have an opportunity to return, but we're about the more the merrier, bring a friend, yeah.
And what would they be doing on the council?
So they'll be making suggestions, you know, gaining leadership skills, and so we're going to be taking our students to a leadership conference, and they'll be able to prioritize what do they want to advocate for, and support within our schools, and be able to share, you know, what are the greater needs of the student body, and again, tying it to our character pillars, but really, it's about, you know, having a voice, learning how to lead, and then having opportunities to do that.
What's, what is the title of the leadership conference?
This one is, I think it-
So the Phil Boyd one that he's coming to do is called the Four As. And the Four As, basically, he wants representation from the academics, he wants representation from the arts, representation from activities, and representation from athletics.
And then the other conference that's in October is going to be the Illinois Directors of Activities Conference, IDASA, something like that, and they really are about bringing all types of student leadership groups together to learn how to bond, team build, and then strategize around what they want to, you know, add their voice to, or do within the school year.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to homecoming.
Yes.
I am curious, is High School Musical still relevant to you guys? Like, that's a ten-year-old movie at this point.
I'd say so, yeah.
Yeah, it's a classic. It's a classic.
It's a classic.
Yes, it is a classic. All right.
How about Greece?
Six-day count.
Six-day count, an important metric that we take, we're required to take it, whoop, I just done the wrong thing. Two interest, a couple of interesting things that I would just, I would say here. Historically, I always think it's interesting, look at the history of our district, you have that document, it doesn't, its star doesn't shine that well in this format, but you can see how much enrollment we've had since nineteen eleven, that school year, all the way until now. We clocked in at three thousand six hundred and seventy-six students, that is charting, and that's students present that day. That can usually float up by a hundred or down, you know, we kind of needle on that. Right now, that is right online where Jerome McKibben, oddly enough, two years ago put you. So that kind of slight decline that he predicted up until 2027, right? A little bit off the mark of four thousand, and then maybe growing back into that. Thing, the other thing that is significant for the board is our growth in free and reduced lunch. We are presently at about twenty-nine percent free and reduced lunch, that's also something that we take, students taking advantage of that program, that's built into these metrics as well. But something to keep our eyes on, also, you know, an astute prognostication by Jerome McKibben, that we wouldn't see more students, we would see different students. You know, his trending in terms of the growth of diversity, the growth of free and reduced lunch, those dynamics in the district, you know, they are definitely a play, we're really feeling them, and this report really confirms that.
Are we getting, I don't know if you got it, a high, are you increasing homeless rates?
I wouldn't say an increase, I don't know, Dr. Huntington, would you say, I wouldn't say an increase, but what's your opinion?
No, I mean, I think we had a really large group, are you talking about grade thirteen? Like the, no?
No, just declared homeless.
Oh, homeless, no. We did have an uptick this year, but they're different. So last year, when we had an increase, the students were being, coming in as listed as migrant students or asylum seekers. This year, we do have a fair number of students, but they're not necessarily asylum seekers or migrant students.
And homeless has declared homeless shifts, you know, it's one of those moving metrics where a student can be homeless first semester, housed second semester, so it can move, you know. But our two biggest growth areas are low income and Hispanic origin, but those are not necessarily paired, I wouldn't want anybody to make an inference that those are paired, necessarily.
Thank you.
May I jump into overnight field trip? Just, you know, these overnight field trips are presented to you, just so you know, you know, Porter's doing wrestling, I believe you'll be going to Coroville, Iowa, Avery, we wish you all the best, boys golf, we've got some theater in there, we've got some Skills USA in there, you'll be going on Skills USA overnight, we're heading to the wonderful berg of Elgin, Illinois, so all the best. Maintenance report?
Maintenance report.
All right, lots going on, as always, I don't know if there's any question about the maintenance report, but good news in grounds, good news in soccer, we might be talking about large life safety, but we still need to change heat exchangers, and do greenhouse repairs, and basket and curtain inspection in our batting cages, these things are all, are all going on. This is oftentimes the time of year that our grounds people are doing important field remediation renovation of the A fields. Any questions about the maintenance report?
All right. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, items two through eight?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Teas and second by Dr. Shaw, are there any questions? All right, Carrie, non rook call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Teas?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the authorization to use fire prevention and safety funds?
Are these life safety?
Yes, life safety.
Yeah, this is the life safety list that we talked about.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Lopez, and even second by Mr. Travis. All right, rook call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Teas?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the authorization to use fire prevention and safety funds?
Are these life safety?
Yes, life safety.
Yeah, this is the life safety list that we talked about.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Lopez, and even second by Mr. Travis. All right, rook call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Teas?
Just a quick clarification, so when we say authorization to use those funds, that's approving the list. That's making sure we're clear. That's approving the list to, to use those items under the heading, if they're approved, of course, under the heading of life safety. So you would still have to vote on any kind of bond issue, you'd still have to vote on the projects themselves. Yes.
Okay, all right, rook call.
Navara, Travis, Teas?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the denial of a community member to enter all athletic events or extracurricular activities at La Porte Township District 205 grounds until Friday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty, twenty-five, in accordance with procedures outlined in Board Policies two colon two-three-oh and eight colon three-oh as discussed in closed session. The denial can be extended if any further campus safety and security issues arise with the individual in question.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Teas, and second by Dr. Shaw. Rook call.
Teas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the annual budget for the 2024-2025 fiscal year?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Teas, and second by Mr. Travis. Rook call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
And then, before any of you leave for tonight, just make sure, we got to make sure to sign it.
Yes.
Okay?
All right.
All right, there are no policy updates, all right, any announcements?
The announcements are right there, the announcements are, everyone has to sign, so please don't leave. Our student board members, I need to talk to you about triple I, please get in your lunch selection, I'm going to take care of that, and then these are all events, you know, the ones that I would highlight, Facility Master Planning, that's Mrs. Lopez, Kenneva, and Mr. Teas, we begin our fall play October twenty-ninth, we've got some fall band concerts there as well. Kind of a neat thing that we do annually, November first, all board members are invited, it's one of those kind of events, all of you can come, it's not an Open Meetings Act violation, if you're just at a social event, but we usually have about two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five senior citizens that come, they have a nice dinner, they go down, that's a Friday night, to see our fall play, so, kind of a neat thing to be at, and, you know, some of the wisers in the community. So, kind of a neat thing to be at, and, you know, some of the wisers in the community. That's a Friday night.
All right, then, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Shall move. And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.